Can we stamp in the pledge of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Aaron.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think tonight, we got the public input for us. I think we should do that first. If anyone has anything to say or want to talk about, please do. Okay, what I, I think what I'm gonna do first tonight is, um, we got, I know we have guests here, we're gonna talk about the bowling alley, and I would like, Mr. Tameo, you wanna come up? Please? Go on the chair.
Do you want to keep from trucking?
Go ahead, I'll give you the floor.
Okay. I guess some of you weren't aware, but I did make an offer on the bowling alley, well, the building and the parking lot. So this is what I have, that I actually gave to, uh, back on the 11th. And I did leave out the attorney's name here. Right, you had enough there?
Thank you.
Now, the original one is this one here, it just had a, the attorney's name in it. No, I didn't revise anything, I mean, obviously, it's gotta be your name on here, Ed. But...
Well, for now. Yeah, I know, I'm kidding, I'm just kidding.
So, basically, uh, we just kinda need to know, I mean, we're ready to go through with this. I offered $15,000 for the whole building and the parking lot, obviously, between Wayne Bank and the bowling alley, that is the bowling alley's parking lot, right to the poles. Uh, I worked for the ball, uh, the loft, I've worked for the bank for many years, so I know the property. Now, on the other end is the only thing I need to know, where the village owns out back, where the property line goes for that parking lot. I know we, you guys had it, uh, coned off, but I need to, I got the blueprint somewhere, 'cause I worked for Bruce Pearson on that building years ago.
I wish you could find it.
I, I think we have.
I greatly appreciate it.
I must have it somewhere.
I greatly appreciate it.
And I dug up the septic, uh, back then for Just Hair, when Holly Hunter owned it. And I did run it to the village, so I know where the, approximately where the sewer line is that the village owns, so, and that's, I think, the border right there. But, uh, if I don't have it, I know who does.
Yeah, I've been trying to get a copy, I'd appreciate it if you could.
Uh, Jack Weiss made it.
I spoke to our attorney this morning, I had to go to Niantas, so I went in and stopped to see him. And I'll, well, I had a conversation with you before, anyway, about this. Regarding the, the parking area by the loft, that part there, because it's, it's, the property that we own regarding that parking lot is the, the parking lot next to the laundromat and that, it's all one piece of property, it's like an L-shaped piece of property. And the only way that we could get rid of that is to split it up. You know what I mean?
Right.
Which, we can do it, but it's gotta take a while to do that. The lawyer recommended to us, to me, this morning, to tell you and the board, that for now, we could just lease it, for right now, that, that particular portion, to keep it with you, so you can have it, and not, not that we're gonna take it back or anything like that.
In the back, you mean, right.
And that, that back part there.
Right.
This way, until we can legally separate the two, we'd have to separate it right where the drive comes up, you know, the end of the building there, and that would be all yours.
Right.
And not ours. Uh, but we have to do that legally, and, and we have to do it a little bit differently because he said to me that when you get a piece of property from foreclosure, like we did the bowling alley complex, it's different when you get rid of property that the village has owned for many, many years, how long, how long we've owned that. So I said, "All right, it's not a big deal," he says, "we can do it, it's just, if you're gonna do this, the sale and everything now, you would have to lease that front, so he can use it and have it and not be a problem, then we'll work out how to, how to get, split it up and take care of it then."
Great, okay.
Uh, he also, also suggested, which I had mentioned to you privately, that we would sell it on the condition that within, say, a year or so, that you would show some kind of improvement on the property.
Right.
That you gotta do, otherwise, it would revert back to us. But you said to me that, you have any idea, like, when you, are you thinking of the bowling alley for us, or you're thinking of, here's how he worded it to me, you would have to show some kind of improvement on the property, whether it be a storefront, or whether it be the bowling alley. But I know you mentioned the bowling alley, 'cause you wanna do the bowling alley.
I have somebody that wants to go in where Just Hair was, in the back, 'cause that's, nothing wrong with that at all. Okay, um, unless, since the last time I've been in there, but I'm sure that's, it's fine, okay?
It's still...
Somebody wants to put a tanning booth in there, they keep, they want, like, tomorrow, you know, I mean, they wanna do it as soon as possible. So what I wanna do, first thing, is get the bowling alley up and going. I mean, first thing, I'd fix the roof, obviously.
You know, but do you have any, do you have any idea when you think the bowling alley might possibly, I'm not trying to tie you down to it or anything, but...
I'm hoping by, by time snow falls.
Really?
Yeah. 'Cause it doesn't need a whole lot.
But you got, you got someplace where you said you can get this part, so what do you need?
And I did go over, like you said, I went over to Niantas, I checked out, uh...
Did you?
Yeah, and, uh...
Did you, I don't know if I lost it all, or...
Well, it looks like, uh, I mean, I couldn't get inside, obviously, but I made an appointment to talk to, uh, the manager there at the Holiday Inn.
Oh.
And, because parts of it is told, but, I mean, that's all, that was all bowling alley.
Right, right, right.
And really, here, there's only, I think, there's five lanes, I think, that are complete. And there's four lanes, I believe, four was a tenant sold, there's half and half, but it's only needs that laminate board on top.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, the machines are all there.
Well, no, if you could, that's great, I mean, I'm, I'm thrilled that that could happen. I wasn't trying to put it, a timeline on it, I was just asking...
Right, that's, that's what I've been trying to do.
So you're talking...
First thing, first thing I wanna do is get that, you know, obviously, the lights and all the plumbing out.
Yeah, yeah, then you have to get going.
Uh, I have, like I said, tanning salon will be perfect right now, one little spot, there's nothing wrong with any of it. The floor, however, behind it, all the way in the back of the banquet room, uh, there's wheat back there, but if someone gets in that front part right away...
Yeah. See, the lawyer was saying to us, all you really need, what he would like to see is like a seal. If you, if you got a, a business that, say, the tanning place, if you got it in, it's open, it comes down, it gets expected, you know what I mean, right, and, and it's okay, then to him, he would feel that shows, probably, that shows that...
I have another person who wants to...
Yeah, I know you've mentioned...
Take the banquet room.
Yeah, so...
For his business, so, and that's...
I, I think that's great, so... So that, that was the only, see, that was the only holdup on his end, the lawyer's end, just to make sure that whoever took it over actually did something with the, not just, I know you're not, but I'm saying, just so it wouldn't be there as a tax write-off or something like that, 'cause that's what, it's doing nothing now.
Well, you know me, I'm always doing something. I mean, that, when I'm not working at my job, I'm working.
You've got plenty to do here, that's for sure.
Right.
So, um...
And I do have, uh, a variance, I believe, of the stuff that's in the far end of that building. I can get it away with flood, a lot of it's the flood debris, you know what I mean, it still has silk on it from the flood, it's never been cleaned out.
Yeah. You got a lot of cleaning to do, but as far as, as far as any kind of, I, I think I explained to you this in person, because though it's in the floodway, and because, um, of whatever money you wanna put into it, um, the, it does not have to be floodproof, and, and Josh, if you, if I'm listening to something, please fill me in. It's my interpretation of, of the flood law is that as long as you do less than 50% of the assessed value of the property, you do not have to floodproof the building. So say it's assessed for, I don't even know what it's assessed for, 300 and...
393, I believe.
390, 400, so, as long as it's under $200,000, that work that you're doing on the building, it does not have to be floodproof. And I, from what you're saying, I, I think that you're gonna fall very easily in that category. And that's always based on one particular project. You could finish the project and maybe start another project, and I think you'd be all right too, but...
Right, I mean, that's, I plan on going from one to another.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the main concern is the bowling alley getting back going.
Okay, and I would just, you know, uh, just keep in touch with Josh to let him know each thing, each time you're doing some project, so he can keep abreast of it and give you the, the right things that you need, so we're, we're all working together. I, I, I'm looking forward to getting this place open up, it's been closed for way too long, and, and I'm hoping, really, with my heart, that this really works out great.
Me too.
Well, I, I've been sitting way too long, and ever since, it was, that was the center of the village, as you know, and we had a lot of businesses there, and it was really great, and I, I would love to see that back up again. Matter of fact, if you get it up and running, I have a few other people that were interested in getting involved in some kind of business there, so maybe I could share that with you.
I talked to one of the people you were talking about, about the bowling alley already, and he's, uh, Louie. He's, uh, you know, he wants to jump right in, so...
Well, that'd be good for you, I hope you, but I mean, I have another business that might wanna take one of your stores, that's no problem.
Okay.
Which is, maybe there's a couple of them.
Can, uh, can you tell me what the taxes are on that, a year?
I can't say it off the top of my head, but Jody could.
Just the village taxes, nothing we have any control over. So, I mean, your total tax bill?
Yeah, I just...
Have a clue.
Okay.
They'd have to, you'd have to check with the town?
Yes, sir. And, I don't think it really matters, but...
Yeah, I thought it was around nine, but...
Okay. So it needs to get people in there as soon as possible.
Right.
I'll help you out with that. Speak, anybody wanna talk with the board about this, what do you think, what do you, what's your thoughts on this?
We need, we need to do something with the building sooner rather than later, and it's, it's been sitting too long. And, you know, we need to, seriously, about getting going there.
I mean, previously, we had discussed it.
Right.
And accepted the 15, and thought that was, you know, a reasonable amount. So, you know, I don't see why the board wouldn't accept it as it is. As he says, there is a restriction on, you know, the time limit, and to get something up and running, and I think it was, what, 18 months or something like that, and it's not like you have to do it next week.
Right, yeah.
It does give you time to get something up and running.
Well, it's obviously sooner better for me, too, you know?
So, everybody okay with the pricing?
Assuming we can get a contract signed, worked out and signed, at $15,000 asking price, I'm, I say we jump on it, I'm dying to.
I think the, the board already made a motion to that, to sign it...
I think that was acceptable.
To authorize the mayor to sign once there was an agreement.
Yeah, we did. We made a motion for the mayor to sign the contract with you.
Oh, I'm just a different mayor, okay, they already made it in the previous thing, okay.
Now, the only thing, I know, I was having a problem, I was in here several times with the previous mayor, and I'm a little confused at this point, now...
About what?
I've talked to attorney, and he's telling me, "I need a contract from the village, what you guys expect of me, so that I can take it to my attorney, and then..."
Well, our attorney says...
This is the letter, is, is what we asked, that...
You guys never got this letter?
This is the first time I've seen it.
'Cause I mean, that, that's dated, when I...
Yeah, I, I...
You know?
First time I saw it was when you came in the office and showed it to me, I never saw it, it was okay.
Do you wanna read it?
Huh?
Do you wanna read it?
No, this is you guys' stuff.
Yeah, the main problem, I think, Jim, is, is I understand, or is, was explained to me, is the two lawyers never got together.
Right. And I couldn't figure out why.
It had to be initiated by your, your attorney.
Dave, I phoned Dave Merzick this morning, and he says, "Tell Jimmy, have his attorney call me, and we'll, we'll work it all out and get it all taken care of," it was just as simple as getting a phone call.
Okay.
And, uh, he, I, I brought, I told him what it's about, I'll, I'll give him, we'll give him a copy of this, we'll tell him what the, what the dollar amount is, and, um, we can get going on this. You want me to read the letter, with the...
No, I didn't know if you wanted to or not.
I can read it out in public, I have no problem with that. Uh, well, Steve Condon, it's all put in there, so, "As per, per your request, this letter is, consists of plans for the use of the buil, building located on Water Street. This site will be run solely by me, Jim Tameo. The bowling alley will be renovated and refurbished in its previous full work and potential, and will be made fully accessible to the public. The bar area will be renovated and updated into a bar restaurant as it was before. The storefrontage areas will be renovated and updated as well. They will be available for rental to possible new businesses. Remaining downstairs areas will be renovated to provide strong storage units. The upstairs level will be renovated into apartments to be rented out. With these upgrades, I intend to employ approximately 10 to 20 employees. If more information is needed, I can re-reach that sincerely, James Tameo." James D. Tameo.
Well, the motion still stands.
Well, the motion's on the floor, so, uh, I have got the, the authorities to sign it, yes?
Can I ask a quick question? The way the contract read, it's, you're asking for use of the building, but you're actually asking to purchase the building, correct?
Right, he's gonna purchase the building, yes, correct.
Okay.
Not use of, purchase. He may be using the, our parking lot area there, that, we're gonna figure out a lease for that, because they're attached, the, the misparking we have, and we have to legally break it up, and that's gonna take a while. I don't wanna hold everything up, so we'll, we'll figure it out that way.
And this, this isn't necessarily the contract, it's a letter of intent.
Right, right.
So it's not, it's not the contract.
When, when Jim's attorney called Dave Merzick, he'll make up a contract and everything that we, that I can sign. This is just a letter of intent, and we've agreed on it, and I'll tell, call tomorrow and tell him that I got the authorization, authorization to sign it, here's a copy of what, we're gonna sell for $15,000, and we're gonna lease out the parking lot area there until sometime, how we can break it up and legally give them the whole thing. That sound okay to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, congratulations. You guys have any other questions, though?
About time, right?
Well, it's been sitting a long, long time. It's been falling in that roof, thank God they did part of the roof, but it's, but those last two stores are really...
The ba, whole backup, it needs to be done also.
Yeah, but you're, you're the right guy to do it, 'cause you know how to do it, you can do this kind of work for a long time.
Right.
At least now you're doing it for yourself.
Yep.
As far as I can say, is right now, congratulations, and as soon as we get the contract together, all right, we'll be in touch, and we'll sign it, I'll sign it and get started.
All right, I'll make some phone calls tomorrow and, uh...
Yeah, just get somebody to call Dave Merzick, and I'll call Dave first thing in the morning, tell him we had the meeting tonight, have the minutes and everything, and we can get started, and if you can get that tanning place up and going sooner, first, or whatever, then we'll have Josh go down, look at it, give you a certificate or occupancy, then I can go to Dave and say, "All right, here's the goodwill," right? He was just looking for goodwill to make sure that you're gonna actually do something.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, that, it's just protection on our part, that's all.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good, thanks. Thank you.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. Let's hope the hall works out, right?
It'll work out. Keep in touch, move, yeah. Please do, I can't, we can't find, we'd appreciate the help, okay, thank you, good luck. Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I think that was important to get that out, 'cause that's been a, boy, it's been a burden since a long time.
That was great.
Thank you.
Albatross.
Thank you.
Albatross, that's what it is.
Yes.
Okay, um... Abstracts. I hope we all had a chance to look at the abstracts.
Yes.
If you have, I need a motion to approve them.
I motion that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Palm of heads? Cedarwood? Jason?
First time to chop and block.
Business man in town right now.
Yeah.
Very busy. Um, you guys got my report, I'll have the completed report to you tomorrow. Um, front page of the report, at number five, I noted that we had your bidding violation due to craft. Our limit is around 2,200 minutes is what we can go over without being dinged. We were in the 8,000 range.
Jeez.
So, um...
Are we expecting to get dinged?
I don't know if we'll get, I don't think we'll get dinged, but it's definitely an eye-opener, so when that non-compliance gets sent, it would've got sent if we were just over, one minute over, or 4,000 minutes over, it still gets sent, so, um, that amount may make them go, "What's going on here?" So, you know, craft seems to be trying to remedy the issue and change some procedures within the plant when the power goes out to stop it from occurring, so hopefully, that continues down that road. But I did wanna note that we were over quite a bit.
Was that like a weekend, or how did, how did we get so high on, as far as 8,000 minutes?
When the power goes out at craft, the, yeah, and the foam wasn't even included in, in that. Um, when the power goes out at craft, their pasteurizers, the way I understand it, they dump to the floor. Of course, the floor drains are open because their cooling water has to go through the floor drains, and the, the policy is, for, um, for safety, the plant's evacuated, because they don't want anybody inside the plant when the power's out. And at the same time, the milk is running on the floor. So, they're trying to get people to stick around long enough to get the floor drains plugged, so then they can pump this off the floor and send it to pig food instead of it coming to the sewer plant. So, the picture of the foam that I had sent, that was material that was all caught in the offline tank, and natural, um, breakdowns occurred, and they released enzymes which created the foam, and we had foam. So, luckily enough, that stuff was not in the process, but that's a result of spills. So, it has been an interesting month over there, to say the least, and my 18 years working for Cedarwood, that's, I've never seen that in Walton. When I had a stint up to Domo, running the pretreatment plant up there, we had that up there, but that's a, just a pretreatment plant that gets full industry waste. So, to have that over here was, that was quite shocking that morning when we pulled in there, so...
So, we, we were not informed as, as far as that that was gonna be coming?
Well, the fo, that was already all there, it just, it was under air in that tank, and then it, the natural process of wastewater, overnight, it just exploded. And we were, we were pumping it back to, back through as quick as we dared pump it through, it was just, you know, some defoamer and a whole lot of water, we sprayed it all down, and we were good to go, but, um, that, that's a product of us following protocols. When they have a spill, they call us, somebody gets there, we divert the flow and we catch it, so it doesn't have a heavy impact on the plant. But there was so much of it in that tank, because it was every night they were calling, "Oh, well, we got another one," and, "Oh, we got another one," and that, all of that milk, that was the smell that some people might've smelled, was the milk over there just cooking, and, uh, you know, made the foam as a result of that, so... It's gone now, we've got that all through the plant, so that's the good part. And the plant is, um, running well now, they, they were able to shut off our second stage chemical this weekend, so at least we're not slamming it with chemical, we were going through anywhere from 300 to 400 gallons a day, and when they were, craft was shut down, we were going through about 125 gallons a day, so that tells you how much we were up on that, so...
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yes, I watched the emails back and forth Friday, I was off today, so I don't really what went on today, but I saw the back and forth Friday, so trying to get it all straightened out over there. And coming down the pike here, new company's gonna take over, so they may have a completely different set of rules that need to be followed to maybe help prevent this too, I don't know.
But that may, that may be a while before that happens.
Yeah, from what I, it could be...
I spoke, I spoke to Mark Henderson, and he said, "There seems to be not an issue with the company itself, but the State Department." It's funny, they're letting everybody come over the border, but when they want, a company wants to come in, they're giving him a hard, they're giving him a hard time getting the authorization to come in, and that's why it's taking a little bit longer. So he said, "As soon as they straighten that, they'll be down there," but it may be a while.
Right, I know they've been in the plant, they've toured the plant, they've had meetings down there, and they're trying to get their plan of action going, but other than that, I, I don't know what's going on, but...
Does it look like we're gonna send them a bill?
I don't see why not.
We, we, we have, we may have to discuss that.
It, the worst they can do is not pay it, but I mean, it, there's some serious costs incurred over there, just in chemical and manpower, I mean, last week, week before, we, we had guys there all night long, a couple nights in a row.
Right, it's been non-stop.
Yeah. Phone rings, and they go in.
And for potentially getting fined, I mean, come on.
If it keeps up, yeah, I mean, the state could definitely levy a fine.
Right.
So, especially with the history with craft and the whole backyard, so... I do have one request for purchase, um, and it's to authorize Cook Painting to prep and paint the piping in the Seabud building. Um, they're gonna file specs provided by the paint company, that'd cost $12,621. New York City's already approved this project, so it's a 100% DEP expense, I just need approval.
Motion.
Second.
Get them scheduled.
Aye.
Aye.
And they're hoping to maybe get in there this fall, when it starts cooling down, of course, the way the weather is, it's cooled down right now, but hoping to get in there this fall and get that all painted and taken care of, and, uh, make it look much better.
Thank you.
That's all I have, in case you guys have something else.
Thanks, thank you.
Yep.
Watch.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Everybody got the report okay?
Yes, sir.
Good.
I didn't bring mine in tonight, any questions at all, or? We had some trees down across Brooks, smelt a few of those. Had to help from the town for a big one. That was actually a two-day ordeal, but the town helped us all in one day, and next day we finished cleaning it up, so that was a...
That was one of the biggest trees I've ever seen.
One in Westboro?
Yeah, yeah, over by Austin Lincoln.
You've probably towarded the flood of the century.
You went down by the treatment plant, or by the water plant, too.
Yep, we got one in there, and we got two the other day that come down from the Club Royal Oasis site. We got those the other day, had two small ones down.
You got those down?
Yep.
That's good.
So...
And the, the dead one that hit the rail on...
Yeah, that's another one.
But you brought it to the local company to get it addressed?
Yep, we had, one railing has a slight twist to it, um, we brought it over to Empire Metal Works, they're hopefully gonna be able to straighten it out. So then we took some more of the parts off, 'cause they're all starting to get pretty rusty, and Kevin's actually sandblasted them, we're gonna repaint those, we'll get that side back up and going, and then we'll probably move on to other portions of that railing as well, so... So for now, that sidewalk is closed off.
It's pretty, pretty neat that we can get those things addressed locally, you know?
Yeah.
Turn, turn the work in-house.
Yep, it helps a lot with time and turnaround and local people.
Yep.
That's good.
Any other questions or concerns?
I don't. Very good. Very good.
Well, guys, thank you. Go work, you're gonna do a job.
Appreciate all the good work.
I'm gonna go back outside.
Yeah. Josh?
Don't really have too much. Lots of training. Just completed my B course, got a 96 on it. Working on my C right now. After this, this week, I'll be certified fire inspector and building inspector. And then in October, I'll be... Once I complete all that, I'll be certified code enforcement. So that's all going good. Just been busy out looking at things, writing lots of letters, doing follow-ups and everything. Lots of lawns, lots of rubbish, unregistered vehicles. Got an unsafe structure, working with the owner on that. He contacted me. Other than that, I think that's about it, us if anybody has any questions or...
No, their report looks good.
Good. I am getting familiar with the program. I'm new to it, I haven't really been trained with it. So each report will be getting better and better, so, yep, that's it.
Well, I think you're doing a good job, but... Anyone I talk to, they may always agree with what you're doing, but the people don't agree, they don't like getting letters of it, but...
Yeah. Code's the code.
Most of the people that I talk to are very pleased with the way that you approach them, that you're an approachable type of person.
Yeah.
That's, I think that's half the battle right there, you know? And so you got a good approach, and I think it's worked a while.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Yep, thanks.
Bill?
October. Order.
Bill Brown? No one's gonna hear you over that.
Oh, yeah, we're allowed.
Yeah, yeah, I get a little...
I just, I'm sorry, I got these outlay, I just put them in your guys' mailboxes this afternoon when I got here. I don't have anything to ask for tonight, so I'll keep it short and sweet. All the funding application stuff we've been talking about, they went in last week. So most of those, they find out at the end of the year, so hopefully they're... Other than that, just trading paperwork back with some of the different agencies. On the water project, EFC, who was funding that project, they've indicated they're looking to close on the financing probably around November, which will allow that project to start with design and survey and stuff like that. And on the grant for the highway garage work, we got a little bit of feedback from DASNY that they're at least releasing their part of the paperwork to the next level up. So it's still gonna take forever, but it was movement, which it's been on hold through the last year and a half, so hopefully that was a good sign.
Excellent.
That's all I got, nothing to ask for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, trustee reports. Solid thing.
I really have nothing to...
And we can deal with that, okay? Eric, you got anything?
Well, as the camera can probably hear, we're paving. I would turn the camera around, but it'd be ridiculous, so we're keeping very active with our paving projects within the village. Zoning, we are working with a new business to get some things addressed, to open up a taproom-style business. And so we'll be setting up a meeting with the code enforcement officer tomorrow, and looking forward to what we'll do there and how we can get them in and start it ASAP. So that's it.
Thank you. Me?
Well, we had a really good summer at Austin Lincoln Park, and it's still going on, but this is our last week for basketball and arts and crafts officially at the park. They've been doing real well with arts and crafts. We've had like 30 to 35 people a day. So arts and crafts has been a big hit this summer. With basketball, we've had around an average of 20 a day. You know, they come and go, maybe not 20 all at once, but it started out a little slow, but it really did pick up, so we've been very happy with that as well. We are losing both of our mowers currently on August 6th. So Dylan Jacobs, after he finishes up with the basketball this week, is going to switch over to mowing starting August 9th. His pay rate will remain the same as it is now, and he will mow up through the 29th. The pool, we are gonna have open through Labor Day weekend. The hours may start getting a little less as we progress toward Labor Day weekend, as we have less and less lifeguards, as lifeguards peel off to head toward college, which is what happened also with our two mowers that we're losing at the end of this week. They're getting ready to head off to college, and so that's kinda... We started losing a little bit of help at the end of the summer. At the pool, the pool will be holding an event in honor of Candy Russell, who was a longtime supervisor at the pool, who's somebody that everybody misses dearly. Laps for lifeguards, pending insurance. They have to get some insurance for the event, and we're working on that. It's an event where individuals will swim laps to raise money for a fund that will be put toward individuals who are pursuing a lifeguard or water safety instructor certification. There are fairly, you know, steep price tags for some of those courses, so the money raised from this will go to help prospective future lifeguards pay for some of those courses.
Regarding that, did Brian give you a date when they're gonna do that?
I don't have the exact date yet, no. We talked on Thursday, and we weren't sure of the exact date. It's gonna be between now and...
Stump Fair Week.
Yeah. It's gonna be between now and the end of August. And we're gonna get the exact date hammered down. But what the motion that I would like to make is just to allow the pool to host this event, pending insurance on the date which we figure out.
I can give you more information on that. The Lions Club is gonna sponsor the event, we're gonna give the insurance. The Lions Club will take the money and put it into a special earmarked account for the pool, for this event, for the lifeguards. And this way, it'll be all taken care of. I just need to get the date, and I'm in the Lions Club, so I'll make up the insurance form, and so it'll be all taken care of, because the village can't do something like that.
So I would like to make a motion that we allow the pool to host the, in honor of Candy Russell, laps for lifeguards, pending insurance from the Lions Club, which it sounds like we have, and on a date to be announced in August. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
Thank you very much. And swimming lessons will begin August 2nd, which is today. And lessons will be held Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will also be a PACA lesson held from 5:30 to 6:00, and PACA stands for parent and child assistance. So it's really for like babies up through toddlers. It's absolute beginning lessons, but it's, you know, the little ones like that need to have the parents in the pool with them, so it's parent and child assistance. We'll have PACA lessons from 5:30 to 6:00 p.m. during these dates. And parents are required to be in the pool with the baby during the lesson. Lesson signups were held on Friday, the 30th, but they can, you can just come and show up, and we will be able to get you in. Lessons will be concentrated on levels 1 through 3, so there's the very beginning levels of swimming, levels 1 through 3, but there's no age limit for that. So even if you're an adult who doesn't know how to swim, you can show up and get a swimming lesson. So levels 1 through 3, and then the PACA, the parent and child assistance lessons. Depending on time slots and the number of individuals in each class, we may be able to offer an upper-level class if possible.
God bless you.
Let's see, we had a broken diving board last week, so we're only down to one diving board for the rest of the summer. We'll get a new one over the offseason. Next year, we'll be back to two diving boards. And that's about what I have for the parks. The Theater Preservation Association will be having their booth at the fair this year, so everyone come on down to the fair to see their booth in the commercial tent. And there you can learn about all of the upgrades that have been made to the theater over the last year, and learn about the upcoming concert season, which will start next month. So we're very excited about that. And I believe that's what I have for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steven, you have anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Major's Report, number 5. A lot of what I was gonna say has already been talked about. As you know, we've had a couple of new businesses already opened up. Chillbillies, which is where the Wes, old Wes building is, he's opened up this week. Packing Heat opened up on Friday. So the businesses are starting to come in. I've been in touch with the guy who wants to open up a sports memorabilia. That's still gonna happen. I've been in touch with Mama Mia's Smoothies, waiting for the health department to come down on there. Eric and I met with the owners of Ostruck. They're hoping that in August, if everything goes well, they can open up their taproom over there on Mead Street. I have another couple that are looking to open up a women's clothing store. We're trying to find them a storefront. I put a couple phone calls in today, hopefully that'll go good. It looks like we're moving in a good direction to get all the stores filled up on Delaware Street, and hopefully that's gonna bring more people to walk down Delaware Street again and get similar to what it was years ago, hopefully. And I think we're all working, coming into a really good thing this year, and that's great. We just hope we keep on going. The next thing I wanted to bring up and ask you guys, what do you want to do? The petition, not petitions, the questionnaires we had regarding the cannabis sales. On the thing that was mailed out, it said, have you back by July 30th? Jody brought to my attention that the water bills don't get paid until August 4th, so maybe it would be good to wait. We're not in a real rush, I don't think. I mean, we can wait till August 4th, if that's okay with everybody.
No rush at all.
Two more days.
It's fine.
We have about, close to 400 returns so far, which I think is pretty good, considering with the police thing, we're lucky we got 100 back, right? So we'll wait for a couple more days, we'll see what the result is, and then we'll have a meeting, and we can discuss which way we want to go.
Oh, that was a good catch, by the way. We're not having a public hearing yet.
Oh, yeah?
No.
On August 9th.
No, no, that's the town.
It's the town is having a public hearing, not the village.
Right, the village is not having a public...
Thank you.
We didn't do a public hearing. We decided to send out flyers, questionnaires to everybody. And when you have a public hearing, sometimes you get 10 or 15 people, and you're not really getting a real representation of what the area is. By these flyers, even if we get 300 back, it's still better than having 20 people and yelling one way or the other. It gives us an idea of where the public goes.
Well, and how many people vote in a mayoral election year? I mean, with the returns that we've gotten back so far? So people are participating in it? It's a representation of what's getting people to participate in their local government? And I'm pleased...
Best, me too.
To participate.
I'm glad to see that people are dropping them off, so... So that's all I typically have. Number 6, the football signs, spaghetti football moms. I think you're all aware, I think I told you all about it. I have spoke to Department of Transportation. They have a certain policy they want to do, that they do, for putting up signs or flyers or anything at all. I have his name, anybody wants to call, we have the name of the person that he would contact, and doesn't come to us, we don't need to do it, they do. The same thing goes with something like this, the football sign, they're gonna be put on telephone pole. I spoke to NICE, they want the person that's going to do that to call them directly. And we also have the name and number of the person to call regarding that. And they would call them directly, they would get the permit from them, and it's really, it don't have to be in our hands, they can take care of it. And I think that's probably the best way to go.
Thank you.
Next thing is number 7, Nikon training is gonna be September 20th to the 23rd. Jody had mentioned it to me, and I feel very strongly that the girls should go to this. They're the ones that are here every day dealing with it, and they need to be up on everything new so that we run a smooth office, which is going pretty good so far. What do you guys think about that?
Motion to approve Nikon training for the clerk and the deputy clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
If we need to, if we can jump in on that, September, but we could...
There's one in the bucket.
Anyone else wanted to join in on that, they could?
Yep. The agenda's out on their website, so you could pick a day.
Cool.
I heard the hotels are nice.
Eight days.
Eight days.
She said eight days.
Yeah, eight days.
Well, we can't spend the night, right?
Well, and for Samantha and I, too, we're gonna wait and kinda see what the Nikon or the...
Restrictions are.
Guidelines are for this COVID crap, so...
If you gotta sit there and wear a mask all day, I have...
That I'm not going, so...
Yeah, we could just zoom in instead.
Yeah. I don't have anything else. I don't, does anybody else have anything you want to bring up? Or do we need to go into executive session about it already? I don't think so. I don't want to say nothing, but this is the fastest meeting I've ever been in. Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.